I got rid of the word encourage and put the word required. So it says, "Designed to require medical cannabis cultivators to comply quickly with local land use regulations."
Can I just interrupt for a second? Can we close these doors? We're getting echo feedback from the TV out in the lobby. Thank you.
In 1795-110A5, I struck the word minimize and added the word eliminate. So it says, "Designed to eliminate the potential for significant additional impacts on the And then, under 1795-120, I got rid of letter S, the entire paragraph. Under 17... Oh. And then V of the... Of 1795-120, the findings again, in V, I eliminated the word distribution in the second line. So it reads, "Nothing in this chapter shall be construed to allow the use of marijuana for non-medical purposes or allow any activity relating to the cultivation or consumption." I got rid of distribution in there. 1795-130, under D, I added the word federal. So it says, "Nothing in this chapter is intended nor shall be construed to exempt the cultivation of marijuana from any and all applicable local, state, or federal construction, et cetera, standards." And then, in 1795-130, I eliminated that in its entirety. That's about the interstate commerce and having the planning director inspect that. 1795-160, the nuisance declared section, I eliminated the word marijuana. So it just says, "All cultivation of medical cannabis" in the second line. 1795-165A2E, I got rid of "during business hours excluding holidays." So it just reads, "Signed written consent to reasonable compliance inspections by county In 1795-165A2G, I have added some language. So it says, "For caregiver grows the number of patients, the registrant will be cultivating for up to two patients and their names, physical addresses, mailing addresses, and contact phone numbers." Subsection I of that same section, "For personal or caregiver grows production of an original and submission of a copy of each patient's current medical cannabis recommendation." Same section, subsection P, "All registrants shall produce for inspection and provide a copy of a current valid verifiable government-issued photographic identification." Okay. 1795-165, large letter F, "Registrants shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws, statutes, and regulations, including but not limited to the provisions of this chapter and all ordinances that apply within the county's jurisdictional boundaries." So I added language there. Large letter H, under the same section, "Registrants shall comply with all applicable local, state, and federal laws, statutes, and regulations." I got rid of the word requirements because we got more specific. Subsection, or large letter K, under the same section, all... Okay. So this... Oh, sorry. Under J, "If the maximum amount of cannabis cultivated exceeds the maximum total canopy area," I added a sentence at the end, "all excess cannabis shall be immediately destroyed with none retained for use of the registrant landowner or for transfer to any other person or entity." Large letter K underneath that, "There shall be no more than one medical cannabis cultivation registration per parcel, except that there may be two personal cultivation registrations on a parcel," because that would still bring it to the 200 square feet. Okay. And then, in L, large letter L, in the same section, there was a large section in there that really only applied to commercial. So I moved that to the correct section, which is 1795-165N14. So the way it reads now is whether or not there is... This is what applies to everybody, and then I get to the more specific things later on. "Whether or not there is a dwelling on the parcel to be registered, there shall be no camping or sheltering by the registrant landowner or any other person in a vehicle, except as described below, or in a tent, yurt, teepee, or similar portable structure beyond the period of time specified in County Code Section 1704-180. One recreational vehicle, as defined in 1706-1630, can be used as a temporary residence on the parcel as provided in Section 1704-130." And the registrants of parcels... Okay. So I'm sorry. So I think I just left it at the camping. Is that what you have, Mr. Merrick? I think the camping was the only thing that applied to everybody. And then the one RV that can be a temporary residence, or the RV that can be one quarter mile of the perimeter of the bute fire burn area, that is all moved to commercial because that applies to temporary agricultural workers. And this is the section that was supposed to apply to everybody. So it just got moved, and we did make the change to a quarter mile. Okay. M, subsection five, the same section, I added at the end, "The name, physical, and mailing address and phone number of each patient shall be provided." M6A little I... I'm sorry. Yeah, M6A little I. "The registration may be denied or invalidated if the sheriff finds that the applicant of the cultivation site has been convicted of any felony or misdemeanor he deems to be reasonably related to the qualifications, functions, responsibilities, or duties expected of an applicant for the type of registration he or she is applying for." And then I eliminated all of the other sections until we get to little V, "The planning director finds that the applicant has a history of local sanctions, et cetera." So those are the only two criteria. And then I eliminated everything else in the background check section. I don't know where you are.
Let's get these two.
Oh, okay. Going back. I missed a couple of little changes that I couldn't see. Okay. So going back to M3, "Personal use or caregiver cultivation may only occur on property owned or leased by..." I eliminated the word individual because it doesn't make sense there. It would just be the caregiver or the authorized patient because no other person can have a grow there. So I just got rid of a superfluous word. Under M4, "Registrians shall demonstrate that there is a lawful permanent dwelling or temporary dwelling on the cultivation site or on an adjacent parcel under common ownership, or that this dwelling is inhabited on a permanent basis by the cultivator or patient." I got rid of the word caregiver. Again, that didn't make sense. It was superfluous.
Am I supposed to be cultivated? Am I supposed to be...
By the caregiver or patient.
You should be caregiver or patient.
Oh, caregiver.
Cultivator.
Right. Caregiver or patient, sorry. Okay. Where are we? Okay. And this is one question. We were not sure what the board's intent was. We assumed that the setbacks of 75 feet and the 1,000-foot distance from a sensitive use were intended to apply to both the personal and caregiver and the commercial grows. Was that the board's intent? That's the one thing that we weren't sure of. And I had not put it in there under the personal and caregiver before.
75 foot setback, 1,000 feet worth of a sensitive location, isn't it?
For the caregiver too?
So we already have that in the commercial. We had not had it in the... Under the personal section. And quite honestly, I don't remember if that was just an oversight on my part or if that was the board's direction. So we've put it back in there under the assumption that you wanted it to be from any grow. But if we're wrong, we can strike that.
They have 200 square feet, right?
Maximum.
Yeah. And... But it could be out of house, just like the personal caregiver, and they're just using 200 square feet.
Yeah.
So they may not have 75 feet to setback.
So should we just eliminate...
I would say strike it out of the personal caregiver.
Okay. Everybody agree?
I would agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with you.
All right. And so I did add, "Access to the cultivation area shall be controlled to reasonably prevent against access by trespassers in the personal and caregiver as well," figuring that that would make sense. Then going to N... N3D, I added a sentence at the bottom. This is the... One of the pieces of evidence that a commercial caregiver... Or a commercial cultivation registrant can provide would be a contract with a dispensary to show that they were in business by today's date. So I added a sentence, "The contract must include the name, address, and phone number of each individual or entity that executed the contract." So if they were to use a dispensary or distributor contract as evidence of their May 10 date that they've been in business that long, then it should be verifiable so that we can find out who the signers of the contract are. Then going down to...
I need to go back to the setbacks. Sorry. On the personal caregiver. So you're saying there's no setbacks for that?
We did not have setbacks in there.
I think there needs to be a setback of some sort. Otherwise, you're gonna... Otherwise, it could be right on the property line. And that could... My goal here is to reduce possible neighborhood, you know, conflict. So I think you should have at least a 30-foot setback there.
30 feet?
That was the original proposal on the permanent ordinance?
For the personal grow.
For the personal.
Just... 30-foot setback for personal grow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And caregiver grow?
I think there needs to be something there. Otherwise, it's...
Otherwise, you can't pull the property.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll put in the 30-foot setback. We won't worry about the sensitive use distance.
Yeah.
Okay. Then going to N4. "The registrant must demonstrate compliance with Central Valley Water Quality Control Board regulations by providing documentary evidence satisfactory to the planning director of either of the following." And so instead of saying compliance or intent to comply, just that they have to demonstrate compliance by having either of the documents listed in those subsections below. And five...
So was there a change there?
There was a change because before, as Sheriff Di Basilio pointed out, it said, "Compliance with the water bore or intent to comply." And we wanted to clarify that we're... It's not just that they wish to comply in the future. They actually had to have a document that was a formal notice of intent. So N5, lowercase c, I had originally put, "For a corporation, limited liability company or limited partnership." In reality, any business is going to be able to register. It doesn't... You know, all of the commercial cultivators are going to have to be a business. So I just changed it to "Active registration as a business entity with the California Secretary of State and Board of Equalization." And then going down to N9, I added, "Or..." Okay. So this is, "The indoor cultivation area has to be screened against parcels or..." Okay. Screen, where are we? "Wahful permitted structure that is securely locked and enclosed by four walls and a roof has window coverings or screens reasonably prevent the marijuana plants from being viewed by members of the public present on a... On public roads, public lands, or public properties and parcels containing a sensitive use, as that term is defined in Calaveras County Code 1791-060B, or a bus stop designated by a school district, provided that the sensitive use or bus stop existed prior to the registration of the cultivation site."
This is for indoor?
That was for indoor. And actually, I need to also add it above to the outdoor. Basically, I think the request was that every time we say sensitive use referring to the dispensary ordinance, we should also add a bus stop designated by the school district.
You know, I think that maybe we should... We should probably... Because we can change that. Sensitive use will be determined anyhow if there is a designated... Designated school area for that. So I'm thinking that... Because we don't have... We don't have a... And I give it some thought. We don't have a verification of that even. So I kind of have an issue with it right now.
So I thought... So I guess it would... I mean, that's a policy issue. But I know that Sheriff Di Basilio and Captain Macedo were requesting that we add bus stops since that's not included right now in our dispensary definition of sensitive use, that we add that. And so every time we say sensitive use, where we just refer back to the dispensary ordinance, that we would add bus stop. And I thought that the compromise was designated by a school district as opposed to just the end of a driveway. I thought there was a majority.
That's what we...
Okay. So we got a majority on that.
Designated by the school district.
So every... So I know I didn't do that in N8, but I can add that in N8. Just every place where I refer back to the dispensary ordinance for sensitive use, I will add, "Or a bus stop designated by the school."
If I can please have the permission of the chair to approach. This is more dangerous than I think. It has more significant implications than might be realized initially. I just... One of the goals of the program that was talked about, the working group, is to be able to find enough people compliant to get the funding base to have a program. So that was been a huge goal for this. Now, if it's a 1,000-foot setback from these things, and hypothetically, and I don't know this, but say that's about 1,000 feet from either side of this bus stop, has a proxy close to a half-mile. And if they're about half-mile apart, these bus stops, and any road that a school bus drives across has a 1,000-foot ban around it. And in District 2, there's a number of roads for which that is true. So depending on the spacing of these bus stops, with the current setback proposed of 1,000 feet, it could actually be a de facto ban for huge strips all throughout the county. So it's not perhaps as benign as it might sound at first. Now, I don't know how far apart these bus stops are. I don't know how many of them there are. But it is possible that this could be a massive disqualifier for a sizable portion of what's out there, simply because of the language. So I understand the concept. I think that for where I'm sitting, I would like to see how far apart they are. Think about if 1,000-feet distance back from those is something that could be workable because if it's taking out entire roads, it's taking out a massive portion of people that are out there. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
I guess where I'm coming from is that, you know, we have this definition of sensitive use and with school districts, or schools, I should say. And when we start talking about bus stops and stuff, they change so often. You know, I would like to look at that in the near future and work with the school districts on that. Because I don't know if they truly have... You know, this year, they have a designated stop here because it's a cluster of families and children, whatever. And next year, they may not. So I can... There's such a moving target when you start talking about bus stops. And my experience with bus stops is that the parent is there with the child, picking up and dropping off. But that may not be other people's experience.
I agree. I think we should probably leave it out for now and explore it later.
My concern is the fire changed it already. And so I'm not sure if they know where it is up there right now. They could be stopping anywhere right now. So how do we even verify that?
Okay. So should we leave... We'll leave out the bus stop piece for now and just keep it? A sensitive use across burn?
I'd like to at least have a chance to go to the schools and see what they have designated.
If that's the direction of the board, we can certainly reach out to the school district and consider that in the permanent ordinance if the board doesn't want to include it in the urgency ordinance at this point.
Well, we've also talked too about really defining sensitive use. So when we talk... When we look at bus stops, I mean, there is other things I know with sensitive use that we need to clarify on. So I think that part of the ordinance needs work overall, and with some input from the school district would be helpful. So we're really looking at the bigger picture of sensitive use.
Okay. So we'll leave that out for now since we've got three. Okay. So we'll then go to N14. As I said before, the portion of the housing requirement that I had put in the general section, the portion that only belonged in commercial, I added it in the right place. So that part says, "One recreational vehicle, as defined by the code, may be used as a temporary residence in conformance with County Code for RVs. And the registrants of parcels within 1/4 mile of the perimeter of the bute fire burn area, as depicted on a map provided by the county, may apply for a temporary use permit for their agricultural workers." So I put that in the commercial section, took it out of the general section. And then, below that, in what will now be numbered as 15, it's the same language for the criminal background checks. It's identical to what I changed it to for the personal... I'm sorry, for the caregiver, except that here, I got rid of that typographical error. So it says, "All applicants for a commercial cultivation site rather than caregiver." Everything else is the same. Going to 1795-170, the invalidation of a medical cannabis cultivation site registration in A2, it now reads, "Other violations of federal, state, or local law other than cannabis-related activities recognized as legal by the State of California are occurring on any parcel within the county." So that's the adding the federal law as requested by Captain Macedo. And then, 1795-170B, I added, this is if the registration's invalidated, "In addition to the planning director notifying the state, I put as well as the Calaveras County Sheriff." Under 1795-220, summary abatement, B says, "Now, the enforcement official shall make reasonable efforts to notify the owner and/or the alleged violator." And I got rid of the portion that talked about having to consult with county council And that's it.
Okay. You have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
On paper? Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
So we have 4-1. It's approved. We have one more little thing to finish. Comments? Supervisor comments?
Don't forget about the third closed session report out on.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. So we had a... We had a third closed session that we... Just before we left a couple of times ago. So we have to report that out. Public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, B1, Director of Health and Human Services Agency. And there was no board action taken. And so now we have our supervisor announcements. And so... Which will go first?
All pass.
Okay? I think we should probably...
All right? I'll make this short and sweet. We attended yesterday the Governor's Task Force Tree Mortality Program. Supervisor Wright and I, we're up in Sacramento. A couple of things to report. They are, once again, actively looking at the private sector for helping with that tree mortality program. But as of yesterday, there was no leeway, other than the fact that the utility right-ofway and county right-ofway is extended to where possible damage from a falling tree extends beyond 100-foot right-ofway from the center of the roadway. That program is actively going. I did attend the Firewise Council in Arnold, held on by CAL FIRE and homeowners associations. Basically, we addressed tree mortality problem and also our disposal of pine needles, disposal of our downed trees right now. And that's a constant, ongoing project. There has been some peaks and valleys with that. But so far, we're able to hold our own to the extent we're not getting into a jammed-up area where we can't get ourselves out of. That's about it. Thank you.
A couple of things. I'm going to attend next Monday the LAFCO meeting.
A couple of things, I'm going to attend next Monday the LAFCO meeting on behalf of Supervisor Olivera. And, and just want to, again, welcome, and look forward to working with Sheriff Di Basilio as we move into this next year and budget season and all that good stuff, so looking forward to working with the sheriff and his department. And earlier today, I couldn't say much, because it was a little emotional, but I'd just like to thank the fair and the board for recognizing me today. Years, years of service to the fair, years of going to the fair, I think I started when I was nine years old as a four-Her, and fair means a great deal to me and my family, and this was quite an honor, so I'll see you guys all at the fair next week.
Yes, you will, you will.
I do want to just follow up, I, we talked earlier about being able to bring the items of the positions that we talked about, and those sorts of things, so I'd just like to see that brought forward in our next meetings and as we deal with the budget.
So I only have one thing, on September third, they're gonna have San Andreas Rumble right out here, it's a car show, and then that, that goes until one o'clock, and then after that, downtown San Andreas, they're having a Founder's Day, they used to have Black Bart Days here, they're having a Founder's Day here, and one of the things we discussed was a, it would be right next to, or right on, the anniversary for the bute fire, and so, we'd like to figure our way into doing a, some kind of a recognition for that there, and, and having that as, you know, I know Steve and I talked about it a little bit, recognizing all the great people of our county that helped with that, this terrible disaster, and I think that would be a fitting place to do it. That'll be on September third. Okay? Anything else?
And I just want to thank county staff for all of their work.
Let's thank Susan over there too, for hanging in there a couple of hours. All right, thank you very much, meeting adjourned.